To the Tryon Construction Corporation petition. We have a request for rezoning from R2 Single Family and B2 General Business to OR, Office Research. Secondly, a conditional use for outside storage of commercial vehicles and warehouse. And number three, variation reduce the setbacks for existing structures. I have a group of exhibits in front of me. I'm going to indicate only now the survey as Exhibit 1. And something that is referred to as the concept site plan is Exhibit 2. Is there a definitive site plan?
The one you have is the site plan. I mean, you know, subject to if during the permitting process with the staff, they ask us to make minor revisions, but the one that we've submitted is the plan we're proceeding on.
So our ordinary condition of if this is approved, it will be constructed in accordance with the site plan is going to be okay? Because if there are deviations at all, it'll only be minor?
Yes, and pursuant to staff's permitting issues.
And then we'd have essentially an accord. Okay, so can I have all the witnesses, please raise your hands and be sworn in?
You're someone swear from the testimony about to give this cause now. You're the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth, so help yourself.
I do.
Okay, how many people do we have? Two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. So somebody has to step out, a couple of people, if that's convenient. And then I'll recognize Mr. Brian Armstrong as the attorney for the petitioner. Mr. Armstrong, identify your other exhibits as you proceed and as you wish to introduce them. And so we don't have all of our members here. Oh, yes, I think we do have all of our members. Is Mr. Hakim represented by? Okay, great, then let's proceed.
Thank you. I'm going to start just by describing the property and the history of the property and the owner. The owner, Mr. Randina, is here in front of you. He's owned the property for about 30 years. He's operated Tryon Construction, a sewer and water construction company on the property for that 30 years. The improvements on the property currently include a, an office. It used to be a house, but it's an office. And then I also have concrete block building that is used for warehouse purposes, including storing equipment for his construction company, supplies for his construction.
Any good comments?
Shh. And also, the property, the main portion of the property, which is gravel, covered in gravel, is currently used for outdoor truck parking and also parking of Tryon Construction's construction vehicles. And that's been used that way as a legal non-conforming use for approximately 30 years. The need for truck parking has exploded in DuPage County recently. Mr. Randina, in fact, has a waiting list of people who want to sign leases with him to park trucks in the parking lot that he has. We all know about the many, many warehouses along North Avenue. And also, the most recent indication of the need is the rezoning of property and construction of the pilot truck fueling station and truck service, not mechanical service, but station to serve the truck drivers, showers, food, et cetera. So the need for what the applicant is asking for is very evident and is growing and will continue to grow. Regarding the facility in particular that Mr. Randina intends to operate, he intends to have written leases for each customer and that he will impose some restrictions that we'll talk about in some of those leases. About 80% of the customers are over-the-road truckers, meaning they pull in on, say, a Monday morning, they park their car, they pick up their truck, they leave, and they don't return to the site for several days. Might be Thursday or Friday. You know, it's all right if I remove my mask for purposes of speaking.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. As I was saying, about 80% of the vehicles are over-the-road truckers. About 20% are trucks that are day in and day out. Those trucks are going to be parked on the southernmost portion of the lot, closest to North Avenue. There's not going to be any truck repair. Not going to be any mechanical work done. You know, a truck driver might fix a mirror, might fix a headlight, but this is not a truck repair facility. It's going to be strictly office, warehouse, and parking. Another issue is that in the lease, the, in the leases, the applicant's going to restrict, in particular, parking. Parking at the north end here, there's a, on Exhibit 2, the site plan, the northernmost end, there's a row of parking spaces. These parking spaces are going to have written restrictions in the lease that operations cannot occur after 10:00 PM and cannot occur before 7:00 AM. And that, those times coincide with the Pollution Control Board regulations and nighttime versus daytime. Those are the nighttime hours. So these northernmost parking spaces are going to have no nighttime operations. That's going to be written into the leases. The, so the overall goal here, obviously, is to expand the facility. The parcels that you see on the site plan, currently, this area where it indicates storage, that's currently just a wooded lot. That's unimproved. Actually, there are two lots here that are wooded lots that are unimproved. And then there's a lot to the east here that is also wooded and unimproved. And in addition to making, preparing those for parking, Mr. Randina is going to clean up the site. He has some materials there for his construction business. Those are going to be cleaned up. He has some other items there, some supplies. Those are going to be cleaned up. He has some piles of materials. That's all going to be cleaned up. So really, what we're going to do is redesign the existing facility to improve it and have it designed specifically for these purposes, the truck parking, in addition to the warehouse and the office. And then the new areas to the north and to the east are also going to, obviously, be designed for those purposes. The engineer, Reed Magner, has designed the layout. He's designed it to comply with all the applicable engineering standards and customs and practices, in particular, drive aisles that are approximately 90 feet wide, which is more than enough room for trucks. All of the parking spaces will be about 12 feet wide and they'll be 75 feet long, so that'll be adequate space to park trucks. The surface will be asphalt grindings. And each parking space is going, is going to have an identifier that will identify the space number. Now, when Mr. Randina does the leases, these people are going to rent a specific space. So they'll rent space number 126 in the lot. And they will park in that lot. That will be their space. They'll park in that space. Each space is going to be identified by signage so that people know which space they're renting and know where it is. And then the, as far as any revisions to the parking lot, all of the stormwater requirements will be complied with. The applicant will go through the stormwater process and whatever they instruct him to do regarding the parking lot, he will comply with. The other things that are going to occur, that's important to note, there's an access here on Morton Road that exists currently. That access is going to be improved. It's going to be widened and there's going to be an improved radius, so it'll be easier for the trucks to get in and out. And then we're also intending to ask IDOT for a right-in, right-out on North Avenue. And the engineers indicate that that's likely to be approved, but obviously, that's something we have to submit to IDOT and get IDOT approval. And another important thing to note is the, the applicant intends to restrict right turn out of trucks onto Morton Road. He's going to tell people in their leases and he'll put a sign there that says, "If you're driving a tractor-trailer, you can't turn right out of the parking lot to go north on Morton Road." An automobile can, but a truck cannot. A truck will only be allowed to go left, to go southbound on Morton Road, to go towards North Avenue. And just so everybody knows, we have spoken with the Wayne Township Highway Commissioner. Morton Road is under his jurisdiction. And with that caveat, he does not object to the project or the improved ingress and egress driveway that he's going to install on Morton Road. Okay, before I go any further, Mr. Randina, did everything, is my description so far about your property and what you're going to do with it in your intent correct? Do you agree with that? Okay, and Mr. Magner, are you here? Yeah, Reed, did you hear everything I said about the engineering aspects of the project? Okay, and did you, do you agree with everything I said? Do you have anything else to add? Okay, thank you.
Do we have their spellings and addresses, et cetera? Does Court Reporter have that?
Sure, we can get that for him. Do you have the, yeah, she has the business cards.
Okay.
Mr. May, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. North Avenue, as I said earlier, well-known, is a very active truck route. It's actually a strategic regional arterial route, which means it's designed to carry a heavy volume of trucks and is sort of the, one of the main east-west thoroughfares for trucks through DuPage County. So it's designed for that. I think the traffic studies, the most recent one, it's, ones indicate about 5,000 trucks per day along North Avenue. So that just demonstrates, again, the need for the type of facility as well as the appropriate nature of the type of facility. The, the increase in the number of parking spaces here is not really going to have any impact on traffic at the intersection of Morton Road and North Avenue. The, with the, the existing structure, the infrastructure of Morton Road and North Avenue is, has sufficient reserve capacity to handle the additional traffic that will be generated by the increased facility. And the design of the right-in, right-out of North Avenue will be sufficient to accommodate truck traffic and the redesign and reconstruction of the ingress and egress on Morton Road also will, is sufficient to accommodate any additional traffic that will be generated. And in fact, the traffic study that we performed indicated that if the facility is expanded as proposed, it will only account for 1% of the additional traffic that will exist in 2026, in five years or so, five to six years. So the, the facility is not going to create a burden on traffic. And again, as I said, we're going to restrict trucks from turning north on Morton Road so that the residential areas up there are not going to get burdened with heavy truck traffic. Mr. May, do you agree with everything I said there?
I agree.
Okay, is there anything else you want to add?
I do not have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, could I ask a question of Mr. May?
Yes, please.
Could we just understand, you know, you have a sort of a mixed use? Well, not a mixed use, but you have a couple of different uses here. So in reaching your traffic conclusions, what sort of a use did you model to?
Oh, we modeled after the existing use. So we conducted peak hour as well as daily traffic counts at the existing facility, and we increased them proportionally with the additional parking spaces.
And you visited the site?
We did.
Could you, we usually, I'm sure it's in your report, which has yet to be introduced as an exhibit, but is there a report here?
Yeah, in fact, I just had in my notes that I wanted to offer Exhibit 5 is the traffic study. I'd like to offer that.
Okay. Does it indicate in your report, which is Exhibit 5, the dates of your visits and the times a day?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Well, you want to tell us what they are, if you remember, right away?
Yes, I have them here. So we visited the site and conducted our counts both at the existing access drive and North Avenue with Morton Road on Tuesday, October 27th. Understanding that this is, you know, we're in the middle of the COVID-19 pandemic, we supplemented the counts at North Avenue with Morton Road with counts we could previously conducted at the same intersection in May of 2017 to determine any reduction in traffic that may be occurring today.
Okay, that, that was the thrust of my, traffic studies today are difficult because of the decrease in traffic, but you've addressed that point. Go right ahead.
Yeah, and as I indicated, I do want to offer the traffic study, Exhibit 5, in evidence.
Okay, we'll take it.
And another thing to note while we're on the traffic is, you know, the buildings that are currently on the property that are going to stay on the property is this, is a small former house that's used as an office. It's probably, would you say, 2, 2,500 square feet, Mike? 1,800 square feet. And then the concrete block building, about how big would you say that is? About 2,000 square feet. So, you know, they're, they're not big buildings. The buildings are not what's going to generate any traffic. You know what, I'm going to ask the noise expert to come in. She'll take a seat. As part of the preparation for the hearing, we also conducted a noise study that was prepared by Huff and Huff and Mr. Jerry Trupack, T-R-Z-U-P-A-K, is here. The noise study was conducted in November, is that right? October, okay. The noise study was conducted in October of 2020. And in, in performing the study, I won't get into all of the details of the metrics, but they definitely complied with all of the Pollution Control Board regulations as far as calibrating equipment, making sure they're using the correct equipment, making sure they're putting the equipment in the correct place. The study, the ambient noise, the background noise against any new noise. And as I said earlier, the Pollution Control Board regulations differ for daytime noise versus nighttime noise, so that allowable levels of noise are lower at nighttime, which is 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And it's also important to note that when they did this study, they analyzed, they were, they were basically analyzing the worst-case scenario here for the worst possible noise case scenario here. And the, they monitored noise for several hours, right? Each, when they were out there. And the, the, the results of the noise study are that with the expanded facility as proposed by the applicant, noise from the vehicles will not, will not exceed the Pollution Control Board regulations as long as idling is controlled. And Mr. Randina, again, is going to indicate in the leases that trucks are not going to be allowed to idle, you know, for extended periods of time there. It's, there's going to be a limit to idling. So with that restriction, there won't be any pollution control, any noise will be less than the Pollution Control Board limits, will comply with the Pollution Control Board limits. And then as far as noise from trucks driving by, passing by, with the expanded facility, again, the noise levels are not expected to exceed Pollution Control Board regulations. And also, if there are multiple trucks running at the same time, they noted in the report that that only increases the noise by three decibels. It does not double the noise that people hear. Mr. Trupack, do you agree with everything I said?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have anything else to add that I missed?
Mr. Armstrong, is the stand of trees in the middle of the property going to be eliminated in order to increase the truck spots?
Yes, the trees in the middle of the property will be eliminated. We'll get into this a little more with Mr. Abel. Trees on the perimeter are going to remain. A lot of the trees on the perimeter, the trees in the middle of the facility are going to, are going to be removed.
And to Mr. Trupack, how does that, if it does, how does the removal of that significant stand of trees affect the noise? How did you account for that?
Yeah, and, this photo.
No, you know what, let's just talk to your lawyer. I don't, if you want to say something, I want to coordinate with counsel.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, there's, is indicating that there's a, on this area, which is a couple of years old, the traditional trees, those trees are not there today. They're already gone.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
And one more question. To me, the one key issue of noise is at the point of ML1 and ML2, which is depicted on the back of the property, closest to the residential area. You talked about pollution control standards. Can you also address county noise ordinances to tell us how they compare to pollution control standard ordinance concerning noise? Do you know that?
I don't, this time I, I don't.
Well, I think we should have some assertion at some point that we conform to county standards as well. You could supplement.
We can supplement with that. And then again, before I forget, I'd like to offer the applicant's Exhibit Number 6, which is the noise study report.
I, I've been referring to it and we'll receive that as 6.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next subject I'm going to talk about is the lighting report and the lighting plan, which I have marked, the light report is Exhibit 7 and the light plan is Exhibit 8. And this work was performed by Peter Stevenson, who's here. Mr. Stevenson is an engineer licensed in Illinois, specializes in lighting. He prepared the, did the studies, prepared the reports. Now, we're proposing 22, total of 22 lights on poles. And we're going to use light shields that will direct the light in such a way that it will not spill over onto adjacent properties, at least not in any way that exceeds the county standards. The plan that Mr. Stevenson has prepared complies in all respects with all of both IDOT's and DuPage County standards regarding transmission of light at the property line. There are a few locations, I think, where there's one half, one foot candle at the property line, but nowhere does it exceed that, at least in the residential areas. And also, the plan also complies with other regulations regarding transmission of light onto both North Avenue and Morton Road. And this plan was prepared in November, correct, November? Yeah, November of 2020. And again, the, the plan complies in all respects with both IDOT standards and DuPage County standards as far as transmission of light onto adjacent properties. Mr. Stevenson, is everything I said correct? Okay, do you have anything to add? Okay, so the light report is Exhibit 7 and the light plan is Exhibit 8. I would ask if you answered in that case.
We'll receive those. Oh. I want the record to reflect that in each instance that Mr. Armstrong asked for the concurrence, an agreement of the statements he's made in the nature of an offer of proof, in each of those instances, I noted that it may not have been heard by members of the board or for the record, that the witness identified himself, indicated that he heard the testimony, agreed with the testimony, and had nothing further to offer.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if you knew that it couldn't be heard.
No, I didn't know that they couldn't be heard. I appreciate their telling me.
I was just.
I want, I want to go back to Mr. Trupack and the noise study very quickly. Mr. Trupack has confirmed that DuPage County refers to the state standards on noise regulations. Is that correct, Mr. Trupack?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so this, so in meeting the Pollution Control Board standards, we also meet the county standards. Thank you. Next, I have Mike Marus here, who's, who's performed some work here, done some studies. Mr. Marus is a licensed real estate appraiser. He's been licensed in Illinois for over 30 years, been an expert in hundreds of cases. I'm sure board members are familiar with him. Mr. Marus, you reviewed all of the materials, the various exhibits that have been presented tonight in the application. And you've also performed on your own research on things like industrial land sales in the area, residential land sales in the area, demographics of the area. And you've evaluated all of that in conjunction with the site plan and the landscape plan and the traffic study and the noise study, et cetera, to come to your opinions, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and you looked at what effect, if any, this, the, the approval of this application, if it's approved, would have on the value of nearby properties and properties in the county as a whole, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, and we'll get into a little bit more detail here. One of the things that the applicant is asking for is rezoning from R2 to the Office Research. And you concluded that doing that will not diminish the value of any nearby properties because, in fact, what's, what's being proposed here is to actually upgrade the, the property with additional landscaping and improved engineering. And that will also provide certainty for the condition of the property and the use of the property to the neighboring properties, which in turn helps the value of those neighboring properties. Okay, and as far, one of the, another form of relief that's asked for here is a variation. And that variation is to allow the existing buildings to remain within the setback. And again, And again, those are, you know, we'll get into the variation more with Mr. Abel, but for your purposes, if the variation is granted, that doesn't have any adverse impact on the value of nearby properties, does it? And then lastly, the conditional use that's being requested here for warehouse and off, and outside truck parking. You also evaluated whether that, if that conditional use is granted, whether that would have any adverse effect on the value of land in the vicinity of the property. And again, evaluating all the information that you testified about earlier, that you evaluated in your opinion, the, if, if the rezoning and variation and conditional use is granted, that will not adversely affect the value of nearby properties. Okay, and in fact, in your opinion, you think it will enhance the value of those properties, as I said, because this property will be upgraded, there will be certainty, there'll be more compatibility of use, right? And one last thing, the current zoning of the subject property as residential, in your opinion, there isn't any demand for that property, the subject property, to be used for residential purposes, is there? Okay, and I think you kind of answered the questions, but you agree with everything that I said, where you didn't answer any of my questions, correct? Okay, that was a poor question, I understand, but do you have anything else that you want to add that you think I missed, or you skipped over?
I believe you summarized what I did.
Okay, and people on Zoom, were you able to hear, Mr. Marus?
Somewhat, not, not really.
Okay, to summarize, he agreed with my statements that if the conditional use and variation and the rezoning is granted, that that will not adversely impact the nearby properties or adjacent properties. And in fact, it's likely to enhance the value of those properties and that the, the the, the subject property, the fact that it's zoned R2 is probably not, is not is inappropriate because there's no demand for it to use that property, the subject property as residential.
Could we develop that last point a little further?
Yes.
So, there are a few alternative standards, all of which do not have to be met. But generally speaking, we are to consider various sort of standards for rezoning. I'm not sure that I've heard no demand being articulated as one of those standards. I thought it was more along the lines of suitability for the use. So, could you, I mean, it's North Avenue, the surrounding properties are what they are. Maybe we can figure this out for ourselves, but could you just develop any discussion about whether the property has been marketed for resident, for sale for a residential use in the past? Whether it's the opinion of Mr. Marus, in spite of the demand, whether it's suitable? Maybe I'm wrong about that, but suitability and sort of market demand are.
I, yeah, those, I think, I think it was my being inarticulate because when I said, you know, that there wasn't demand for it, really what I mean is that there's not demand for it because it's not suitable. If, nobody wants to buy it for residential because it just is not suitable for residential use because it's surrounded by industrial, commercial, across the street, we have, you know, the other, you know, their counter commercial building, the church across the street. So, really, I, I, I should, should have been more clear in saying that, you know, lack of demand really means there, the lack of suitability means nobody has come along wanting to buy it to develop it for residential purposes. So, that's really why we should have expressed it.
And the discussion about up and development up and down the street, can we just have sort of a trend of development? I think it's obvious from the aerials, but could we just have Mr. Marus, if he's the witness on this, talk about.
Yeah, you know, he, he can. Mr. Abel's going to address that.
Oh, wait, we'll wait for Mr. Abel.
So, yeah.
Or whoever you want.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Mike is more than capable of addressing that. He's examined the surrounding area and he knows the properties along North Avenue. I'm sure he would agree that, you know, that for this property, the trend clearly is not for residential development, right?
Better step up and repeat that.
Yeah, I couldn't hear it at all.
I'm Mike Marus. The combination and the trend of development along North Avenue in the last decade has generally been for large industrial uses, high boxes, very high clear ceiling heights, filled up concrete. Then there's a mix of supportive, commercial uses and support services for the area. And coupled with very high volume and fast-moving traffic, really doesn't lend itself to high-quality residential development. So, the demand is limited and the price points per square foot are less. And then there's access issues coming in and out of, off of North Avenue. So, there's a whole host of reasons why the property really isn't suitable and the value, if there is demand for residential, is significantly less than the proposed use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then, addressing your comment, Mr. Cartholme, going to some of the land planning specifics with Mr. Abel at this point. I know the board is very familiar with Mr. Abel and his qualifications, so I won't take time doing that. The, there's a couple, couple of big points we want to make. The, you know, the zoning that we're asking for is the same zoning relief that was approved for the counter commercial property at the southwest corner of this intersection about three years ago. That's now, that has since been annexed by Winfield, I believe. But, so, you know, we're asking for the same relief. Obviously, we're not putting up a 250,000 square foot building like they did, but that's, I think, an indication that this is an appropriate zoning category for this property and this is, you know, it's an appropriate location for it because it's been approved just across the street. That also indicates the trend of development in the area, or at least in part, the trend of development. The OR district that we're asking for does allow for industrial type uses such as warehouse, conditional use. It's a unique district under the zoning code. And it requires higher standards, meaning higher standards than a lot of other districts. The minimum acreage is 2.5 acres. It requires greater setbacks than most of the other districts. And we'll get into the details. We, we meet all of the standards of the OR district. Certainly, we meet the size and we certainly meet all of the setback standards and we'll get into the details with Mr. Abel. So, the proposed use, including the rezoning and the variation and the conditional use, is appropriate as demonstrated by the property, just Kitty Corner. The majority of the property I have here, try and exhibit number four, which is demonstrate, shows the land use and zoning of the surrounding properties. So, I don't know if you guys on the video can see this, but subject properties here in the middle. To the west is the Wheaton Bible Church, which is, I think, classified as a regional place of assembly. It's a forty-six acre parcel over a building area of over 300,000 square feet and has fifteen hundred approximately parking spaces. To, to the south of our property is B2 and B3 districts. To the east of our property is B2 and B3 districts. We have, before I go get ahead of myself, the south, we have the restaurant, we have a car dealership. And then, to the east of our property, there's one lot that's vacant that is part of this project. Adjacent to that is a business, DuPage Water Conditioning. And then to the north and the northeast is residential. So, it's surrounded, except for the north, it's surrounded by uses that clearly are not residential uses. They're more commercial type uses and then the, the large assembly facility with the church. The, again, as I said earlier, this, the counter commercial building to the southwest was annexed by Winfield after the county rezoned it in a similar fashion that we're asking for. And then, when Winfield annexed it, they attached their own zoning label to it, I think, as a planned development. The as we get into the details of the OR district, oh, by the way, before I forget, I'm sorry, that exhibit I just referred to, the land use and zoning map is labeled trying, exhibit four, I'd like to have that admitted.
Yeah, we'll take three and four. I'm jumping ahead, I presume you want three and.
Yeah, I'm going to refer to three now.
Okay.
So, this is three, and it shows the, describes the landscape plan that we've developed. The so let's start along North Avenue. We have a new landscape plan along North Avenue. Well, we're going to have some naturalized detention. We're going to install some new trees and we're going to re-landscape that. It's going to look much, much better than it does now. There's basically no landscaping there now. So, we're going to improve that considerably along North Avenue, along Morton Road, we're also going to improve that considerably. We're going to be adding shade trees and also some ornamental plants and also some evergreens of both north of the new driveway and south of the new driveway. To the east, which is adjacent to the B2 district, we're going to leave twenty feet of the existing wooded area. There, if you look here, for those who don't know what I'm talking about, here on the east border of the property, we're going to leave twenty feet of existing. We're also going to install more evergreen trees than are there currently. And then, along as you go north, this, this run that goes a little bit east-west and then north, all along the residential zone property, we're going to keep suit of the existing wooded area and we're also going to be adding evergreen trees along, adjacent to the residential. And along the, along the north border, there's a house up here. We're going to keep one hundred feet of existing wooded area and we're going to add evergreen trees. And then, also, we're going to have a storage area between the edge of the landscaped area and the back of the trucks. So, there's not going to be any engines, you know, no truck engines running in this area between the landscaped area and the back of the parking area. All of those setbacks either meet or exceed the requirements of the OR district, depending on which type of property they're adjacent to.
I don't want to belabor this point now for the sake of time, but some of the numbers that you said in terms of the dimensions of the landscape, could you just look at your exhibit after the hearing and make sure that the exhibit corresponds to your testimony? Because I'm seeing like fifty feet, forty, whatever. Just check it out later.
Yeah, in fact, I think the exhibit two, which is the site plan, is a better depiction of the landscape areas adjacent to the other properties. The exhibit three that I was pointing out to has the calculations for the landscape points and we meet all of those requirements, but exhibit two better shows the depth of these various landscape areas that we're going to maintain.
Good, thank you. I was looking at the landscape.
Now, the use that we're proposing is consistent with both DuPage County's comprehensive plan and also Carol Stream's comprehensive plan. DuPage County's comprehensive plan designates the entire frontage along this area as commercial. So, what we're proposing is consistent with that. Carol Stream's comprehensive plan, although this, you know, this property's not in Carol Stream, obviously, but they have it in their planning jurisdiction, planning area, they designate it as upgraded industrial. So, neither the county nor the Carol Stream comprehensive plan show it as residential, the way it's currently zoned, which I think also indicates it's not properly zoned currently. And the proposed use is consistent with both of those comprehensive plans. And again, the, the use that we're proposing, the need for it is clear. It's demonstrated by all of the truck facilities along North Avenue and gas station, the truck gas station that's just in Carol Stream. We talked about the existing uses in the area over before. Again, we have the church and the regional assembly to the west, to the north and to the northeast is residential, to the east is the commercial, to the south is commercial, and then to the southwest is the you know, the warehouse facility. So, rezoning to OR is consistent with, with those uses. And it's not, you know, it, it's not unheard of to have this type of use of residential districts. In fact, you can see Carol Stream as that over here. They have the easternmost parcels that are at the corner of County Farm and North Avenue are, one is B2, one is B3. Those are also adjacent to residential. And across the street, they have some B2, B3 adjacent to residential. So, the fact that this is adjacent to residential is, is not uncommon. And in fact, the, what we're proposing, the OR, because it has higher standards, is probably a more appropriate use to be adjacent to residential because of the more restrictive standards and also the the, the larger setbacks that we're proposing. And again, reiterating what Mr. Marus talked about, the property that proposed, the, the OR district and the use that we're proposing is much more suitable than the residential zoning that currently is subject to. And again, you know, repeating myself, but that's also reiterated by the fact that both the counties in the Carol Stream comprehensive plan suggests that it should not be residential. Mr. Marus talked about the trend of development. Mr. Abel is aware of that as well. That's pretty obvious from the nearby development, both the church and the warehouse to the southwest. These other properties that we're adding, the properties to the north and to the east, obviously, have not been developed at all. But to the extent there's been development recently, it has not been residential. It's been more commercial and along the lines as we're proposing. So, the trend of development, I mean, supports the relief that we're requesting.
I'm becoming concerned about timing.
Yeah, I'm trying to speed through here.
I want to, I want to leave ten minutes for questions. Are you at a point where How, how well developed is your case? Do you have a lot more to offer?
I just have a few comments, just on, a few comments on variation and conditional use and then I'll summarize.
Okay. Why don't you summarize after we ask our questions?
Fair enough.
All right. Go ahead. So give us your additional comments.
Okay. As far as the variation is concerned, you know, the, the building is an existing building. It's been there since. Before the fifties, I looked at the county's GIS website with the aerial photos and the earliest they have is nineteen fifty-six and both of the. Buildings existed then. And the reason that they are too close to the road is because of the widening of North Avenue. So. We think that that demonstrates hardship that's appropriate, makes, makes the variation appropriate. We're certainly not going to. Decrease the supply of light and air. We're going to, you know, use the same buildings. It's going to be the same use. There's not going to be any increased. Danger to the public. Mr. Marus testified that it's not going to diminish the value of the property. Again, as I said earlier, we're going to comply with whatever the county requires as far as stormwater during the permitting process. And then regarding the conditional use. You know, a lot of, a lot of the same comments apply. Use is going to be the same. It's just going to be over a larger area. So we're not going to burden the existing. The streets in this area. You know, this area is well designed to handle any additional truck traffic. The. The, the, the use, as I said, will be consistent with the nearby uses. There really isn't anything. About this facility at this location that wouldn't occur at any other location in the county. So. Given the standards for conditional use, I think that's clearly appropriate and it's warranted here. And there isn't anything that would. Occur here that wouldn't occur anywhere else. So I think it's an appropriate condition use. So with that, oh, Mr. Abel. Did you agree with everything I said? Yes, you do. Okay. And is there anything else quickly, briefly, that you want to add that you think I overlooked? Yeah, okay, thank you. So I'll turn it over for any questions.
Okay. Refrigerated trucks to be parked? No, yes or no?
Possibly, depending on if we get those customers, right?
To the noise person that backed it in. I don't know how you could have refrigerator trucks if you don't have.
Yeah, they're, no. There, there are currently refrigerated trucks that are parked on the property and there were refrigerated trucks parked on the property when the noise study was done. So to the extent that there was, you know, any noise from those, that would be. Factored into the noise study and the result and the use of the noise.
Okay, ordinarily, when we have a lot like this with a lot of possible traffic. We ask for a depiction of the turning radiuses of these large trucks. However, these aisles are so wide, they're ninety feet wide. So I'm not sure that's necessary. I'll leave that. If someone from the board feels differently. We'll hear from them. Then also. Usually hear about oil spillage and drainage and what. How any oil spillage would filter into some sort of a. Storm system if, if, at the worst case. If there's no repairs. I presume there's no. Risk of oil spillage in. Stormwater systems.
That's correct.
Has that been resolved with the stormwater department?
No, it hasn't, but we will emphasize, of course, that we're not doing repairs onsite. Nothing that would, you know, cause anything like that to occur.
You mentioned a, a good number of conditions and referred again to your lease that they would be reflected in your lease. We've, of late, we've been asking for. Financial information to be redacted and leases to be provided if they're prepared. I don't know if they're prepared. Sometimes these conditions or. Restrictions on your, your tenants. Are not contained in a lease, but rather in an exhibit like a rules and regulations exhibit. If you have anything like that, you don't have to address it now, but. If, if you don't object, please submit that.
Yeah, I don't think he has that currently because I don't believe he imposes those restrictions currently, but I will check into that.
And then. We haven't talked about signage. All that means to me is you're going to have to comply with whatever the. County ordinances are on North Avenue.
Yeah, we, we will do that. We will comply with the sign codes.
Who's town? Is this your township, Mr. Murphy? You, do you have any other questions?
And the applicant did ask me to indicate that he has had a phase two study done very recently, which showed no. Contaminants on the property. I know that doesn't address necessarily your question about future events, but. It's a, you know, I think that demonstrates that he's been vigilant with customers in not allowing them to conduct repairs. And so that, you know, it's not leaking oil. If there, if he was allowing repairs and leaking oil, that would have shown up on one of the phase twos. Yeah, Mr. Carthel, the chairman, has asked that that issue to be resolved by the stormwater department, which we will do.
How many truck spaces are you going to have?
The plan is for two hundred forty spaces as, as drafted now. You know, depending on what happens with stormwater, that may change, but this plan currently is two hundred forty. Two, two hundred forty with the current plan.
Okay, how about the water runoff? You're putting down just the. Isn't there going to be any water runoff?
Well, the way the site drains now. I don't think much is going to change because for a couple of reasons, and this is, gets into a little bit more stormwater details. The grindings. You know, the, the, the base is going to be redesigned and there'll be gravel, you know, aggregate under the base. Which will hold a little bit of water and then, but the, the site drains currently down to. This down at the east, east corner here and then just call it that goes under North Avenue. In fact, the property's up. Here to the north, the residential and the, some of, a little bit of the property. The church property, I believe, drains onto the property. And it basically drains from the northwest to the southeast currently. And we don't intend to. Increase that because for the most part, you know, most of the parking lot is. Either hard pack now, either grindings or hard pack now, correct? And so we're not really going to be increasing the runoff. Because we're not going to, you know, other than obviously, we're going to increase in the area. But this area down here, we expect stormwater to say is capable of accommodating any additional runoff that would occur.
Have you met with stormwater from the county at all?
I have not. Yeah, just so we have it on the, on the, in the microphones, it's clearing the record. Mr. Magner, the engineer, has indicated that. He's very familiar with the county's stormwater standards, having dealt with the county before. And the design is not indicated to increase the stormwater and it's also will. The, the current structure, infrastructure will accommodate any stormwater. Is that correct? As designed, yes.
The only other question I have, there's no facilities. If the guy gets out of the truck, he's going to take off. Okay, where is he going to do it?
I would say. There's a couple of things that the. The house on the property has facilities. If the customer wanted to use that, that would be allowed. Does the warehouse building have, warehouse building also has a bathroom that would be available? And then I would say, I, I appreciate that. I, that's very true. We do have facilities available to them. I think most truckers probably know where their pit stop areas are. So, but in the unlikely event that that would occur, those, you know, there are facilities onsite.
That's all I get.
Any questions from the board? Just raise your hand. Mr. Ketter, you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to go ahead? Okay. My question's really with the idea that this is a proposal somewhat for conditional use. I'm wondering if there's a time limit on idling? If there's access hours? And why with the two buildings at the front of the property, rather than a variance that couldn't be incorporated into the. Corporate conditional use, so it doesn't run with the land?
You know, I would not have an objection to having those. Having those buildings be conditional use. I think because they're. Because they violate the code as it's written now, it was requested as a variation because, I mean, now it's a. You know, I think it's, it's a, it's a pre-existing. Violation of the code because the, you know, the, the, the building is, the setback is violated because North Avenue has been widened, not because of. Anything that the applicant did. So I think the more proper way to address that, I thought the more proper way to address that was variation. I understand the concern of it running with the land, but, you know, the buildings, until they're, they're going to be, they're going to violate the setbacks until and unless they're torn down. So the, you know, I wouldn't have an objection to make it clear that the variation applies only to the location of the buildings and not any other aspect of the use that we're asking for. And, you know, if, if, if there was some type of restriction imposed in that regard, I think we can live with that.
Could you take Mr. Ketter's comments into consideration, work it out with our staff? And staff, could you incorporate that information in your final report? Anything else, Mr. Cutter?
Well, the, I was wondering if there was a time limit on idling of the trucks? And then if there's just, is it open access twenty-four hours a day or do you have set hours?
First answer. Access to the property is twenty-four hours, as I said earlier. However, the northern area, those trucks will not be allowed to have operations between ten PM and seven AM. But the remainder of the facility will be open for trucks pulling in and out twenty-four hours. And the, as far as the idling, he's indicated that he. Currently, he doesn't have trucks that idle more than ten to fifteen minutes. You know, I think we could, I think we could probably put a restriction of some kind. You know, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know about these semi trucks. I don't know if in the dead of winter, they need, you know, ten or fifteen minutes to warm up before somebody, probably they do. But I think we could live with some type of restriction on idling. But with, I think it's not a caveat that if, if the. Truck needs to, you know, if weather permitting, if it's five degrees below zero and they start up the truck, they probably can't just drive right out. It probably needs to sit for a few minutes and run. Having said that, we can certainly restrict the hours of idling and we can restrict the time for idling. But I would like to have some, if possible, like to have some type of consideration given for, you know, extreme weather situations where maybe it would take longer than it typically would.
Well, once again, work it out with staff, please, and we'll get it in our final report. It could be a condition.
Yeah, and one other thing I want to add is based on the noise study, the, the idling restrictions are nighttime only. They, even when idling. The, the, the applicant would comply with the pollution control board regulations so that. The, the night, the restrictions on idling should be at night only because that's the only time when they, if there was excessive idling, that it might. Approach violating the pollution control board regulations, not during the day. So we would want to make that clear that idling restrictions wouldn't be imposed during the day.
Yeah. Well, my question with idling was both, the noise limit, and then I'm assuming there's an. Exhaust, there could be an exhaust issue if they're allowed an excessive amount of idling with all those trucks in there, if they were all to be doing it.
Well, I mean. The, the, the most that he's had is two or three trucks idling at once because they're all on different schedules. You know, some trucks are gone for three or four days at a time. So he hasn't indicated that as an issue.
Well, there's no guarantee that they're going to, you have them coming and going, but if they all showed up and were all idling, it's a different situation. Unless, unless you're open to a condition that X amount of trucks are, are going to not be allowed on any given day so that it's not completely full.
I think we understand the point. Once again, could you give that some additional thought? If there's a possible condition that you can work out, please deal with the staff and we'll get it in our final report. We're ten minutes over our limit. We've got a bit left to do. I don't necessarily want to set this for another hearing. But if we don't wrap this up in a couple of minutes, we have to go to a second hearing. Let's not do chill. Any questions from the board? Because I'm sure there are important questions. Mr. Ketter, have you concluded? You done?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Anybody else just?
I do.
Okay, I see a couple of hands. Mr. Moran, would you go?
Yeah, I just want to add to what Mr. Ketter was saying. They haven't mentioned about refrigerated trailers. Sometimes refrigerated trailers are noisier than an idle truck, so that was one issue. I'm looking at the entrance on the, on North Avenue and from what I see, there's a median, so that's going to be right in, right out only. An acceleration and a deceleration lane would be helpful. And then the only way they can head eastbound on North Avenue is to get on Morton Road. And I am not a hundred percent sure if Morton Road is two-way and what's going to prevent them to just heading north to lives. That's a, that's a pretty decent road. So they're going to have to get on Morton Road and wait to take a left onto North Avenue to head east. It could be an issue. I don't know, just something that I was paying attention to. So some other things to address.
The, the traffic study did address that, that the issue of trucks turning south on Morton Road to go east on North Avenue, and they've indicated that. That, you know, it's the, the current infrastructure there is adequate, especially because of the large median of North Avenue. But the traffic study has indicated that they don't expect an issue there. As far as the taper for the right and right out of North Avenue. That, you know, we would take direction from that, direction on that from I got.
All right, I'm trying to resolve scheduling issues here, but are you, have you concluded, Mr. Dennis?
Yeah, that was it.
Mr. Moran?
Yes, all said.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have a hand up, but whenever you are willing to let me ask a quick question, I'd like to.
Okay, Mr. Schultz, I know you want to go, so let me take Mr. Hakeem in just one moment.
Um, okay, if it's my turn to talk, I just wanted to.
Just one second because Fisher is not ready yet. I'm ready. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to piggyback a little bit on Mr. Moran's question about the left turn onto North Avenue. It seems like if you had a regular semi truck, that would be fine. Every once in a while, you'll see a semi truck that has two trailers behind it. Is that going to be restricted? Because I would find that hard to believe that you could readily move two trailers across North Avenue. And be, even with the big median area, be able to make that turn. Is there any consideration to that? able to make that turn. Is there any consideration to that?
They call those double truckers?
Oh, yeah, yeah. The double trailers will not be permitted.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mr. Hakim?
Yes, I basically want to follow up on what Mr. Ketter and Mr. Moran pointed out about refrigerated trucks. I was wondering if it's possible that you could require all refrigerated trucks to park on the south end of the lot near North Avenue, then that would mitigate the chance of any kind of disturbance to any residential areas.
Yes, we could do that.
And then the last question is very quickly, I may, may have missed this, but on the north end of the lot, there is on exhibit two, an area marked as storage area. What exactly is going to be stored there?
That would be storage for non-motorized items, things like a boat, a trailer, not a tractor trailer, but a trailer for a boat or a trailer for, you know, equipment, non-motorized, non-motorized items that are a little too big to store at somebody's house or in somebody's yard. Or in a.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, I don't see your, you want to ask any questions? I can't see you too well. Ms. Anderson, can you hear me? Any questions? Okay, thank you. Now, will, I need to take public comments. I understand there's one person in the audience here, a member of the public, is that true? Do you have any questions, sir?
Yeah.
Wait, 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 wait. Anybody else? Right, so you're gonna have to go up here and tell us your, first thing, go ahead and walk up. First, tell us your name, your address, spell your name, tell us your address, probably won't mean too much to it, so tell us where you live in relation to this parcel. And then, if you support the petition, say so. If you oppose the petition, tell us that. And if you just have questions, ask the questions. First, you have to be sworn in.
I do. K O L D, 200 West Main Street, St. Charles. K O L D, by boy.
Where, where do you live in relation to this property?
In St. Charles on Route 64. That's where my office is. I represent Industrial Outdoor Ventures. I'm zoning a turn.
Okay.
Several questions. I just want to clarify for the record. Is the conditional use running with the land along with the variances? Or is the variance specific to the applicant, whether conditional use is perpetual, can be transferred? That's my first question.
The condition, well, the conditional use can include time limits. We haven't cited.
Okay, so that's an open issue.
Open issue.
Okay. And then secondly, the issues regarding the enforcement of the no right turn on Morton and the idling. Is that, did you guys say that was a part of condition that needs to go in these specific leases? Or is that gonna be a condition of the conditional use?
No, the, I'm, I'm sure it'll be, I presume it will be posted. And I presume there will be some generic rules and regulation attachment to the lease, which would say conform with all, you know, posted signs. That's why I asked for that bit of information.
Okay, yeah, it's a great petition. Support it. I think it's commensurate with the surrounding uses and trend of developments, and some of our sets. So, good luck.
Great, thank you very much. Doesn't appear there's anything else from the public. Thank you, sir. So I'm ready for a summary. We've indulged you for a few minutes, Mr., well, for 15 minutes, Mr. Armstrong. I'm not trying to cut you off, but I presume you have a closing statement here?
I do, very brief. I appreciate you indulging me. As I said, the rezoning, variation, the conditional use that we've asked for here is appropriate given this particular property and the zoning and use that we proposed. When you examine the surrounding properties and the zoning and uses of the surrounding properties and the trend of development in the area, and the fact that our zoning that we propose is not in conflict with the county's comprehensive plan, or for that matter, Carol Stream's comprehensive plan indicates that it's, what we're asking for is appropriate. What we're asking for is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. And of course, as I said, we meet all of the criteria for the zoning district, the OR district that we've requested. We think it's, on all accounts, we think it's appropriate to grant the relief that we requested.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll conclude the public hearing this evening. I want to indicate for the record that members of the public will have 15 days after today to present to us public comment, remarks, opinions about the case, general statements. All such additional submissions should be in written form. They can be obviously by letter, but preferably by email to Mr. Paul Hauss. Would you read your email into the record?
It's Paul Hauss. It's Paul dot Hauss, H O S S, as in Sam, at duepageco.org.
Great. Again, that's 15 days from today. That would mean that we could, since we're closed, subject to additional public comment, we could hold a recommendation meeting to move this case along. We don't have a recommendation in, on our regular January schedule because we've set that for a public hearing, but I'm advised by the staff that we can have January 16, 14, January 14 as a recommendation meeting. Is that satisfactory to members of the board?
It's okay with me.
A Zoom.
Zoom meeting.
Great. Well, I'll send you for a recommendation on January 14. Let me observe if the additional information is not available to us that we've requested from the petitioner, and you need a delay to a subsequent month, just tell us and we'll postpone, we'll, we'll postpone that recommendation from the 14th. Okay? Thank you very much, everybody. I feel like I'm completely worn out after trying to juggle these meetings. But, oh, and to the members of the board, I've sent emails on various subjects to you, not related cases. My email is a disaster at the moment, so I'll respond as I can get my email system back up, but look for my emails if you have not received. Thank you. We're closed.
Welcome. Have a great evening.